If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Lee Bogel will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time and this opportunity to bring us here together this evening and to conduct the business of the county. And Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow on us each and every day, that we may take notice of those blessings and apply those and share those with others. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over the discussion here tonight, that you find it pleasing and to benefit most and as many of the county as possible. And we ask that you watch over and guide everything that's discussed here this evening. Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over our emergency services, our military, and all those who take to protect us each and every day and put themselves in harm's way. Heavenly Father, we ask all these things in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the vote, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Lee Bogel.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Hettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Gail. We have no minutes to approve tonight, and we have no items withdrawn or deferred, so we'll get right into our business. All of our business tonight are rezoning requests, and I'll make the announcement that this body is a recommending body to the full Rutherford County Commission, and these requests will be heard in September at the September 16th Rutherford County Commission meeting, and I believe they'll be at 6:30 on the 16th, right here in this courtroom. Item 6A1, we have a rezoning request. The item number is REZ21-011, Brett Mansfield for GB Capital. Location is 3624 Las Cassas Pike. Commission district is four. The county commissioner is Robert P. Jr. Size of the site is approximately 3.7 acres. Tax map is 60. Existing zoning is OP, Office Professional. Proposed zoning is RM for Residential Medium Density. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. This first request, as stated, is for property located at 3624 Las Cassas Pike. This property was zoned R15 under our previous zoning resolution and was granted a conditional use permit for a chiropractic office by the Board of Commissioners back in November of 2007. I did include a copy of that conditional use permit for your reference. When we replaced the previous zoning resolution with our current zoning ordinance and map, which took effect January 1st of 2013, since the property wasn't being used in a residential manner, it was being used as an office, we zoned it to Office Professional for the chiropractic office. Since that time, it's been sold, actually a couple of different times, and the current owners wish to sell the property for a single-family use. However, that is not an allowable use in the Office Professional zone, so they are asking for the property to be rezoned to RM, Residential Medium Density, which is pretty much what R15 was back under the old ordinance. So with that, there is no redevelopment of this property. It's just going to be used as a single-family home. So really, there's really no other discussion on this. It's a pretty straightforward request. We did recommend approval, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff? This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ21-011, Brett Mansfield. This is for rezoning from OP to RM. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners.
I have a motion and a second to approve REZ21-011 for Brett Mansfield.
All who are in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6A2, REZ21-007, Hudson Steel Engineering for George Lopez. Location is Old Nashville Highway. Commission district is 19. The county commissioner is Rod Key. Size of the site is approximately 12 acres to be rezoned. Tax map is 70. Existing zoning is CN for Commercial Neighborhood and CG for Commercial General. The proposed zoning is a planned unit development for a soccer facility. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This request, it will look familiar to the planning commission. This was actually on last month's agenda and was deferred to this meeting. I won't go into all of the details that I did at the last meeting unless you just have specific questions. At that point, I'll be more than happy to do that. Most of the issues that were discussed at the last meeting, we've relayed to the applicant at least as far as him trying to address those comments. One of the comments had to do with installing a turn lane along Old Nashville Highway for the use. They have submitted a revised pattern book. Now, when I wrote these comments originally, we still were waiting on that, so that's why this is a little, the staff report that you have here is a little vague in some of these things. But you will see in the pattern book that they are showing turn lane improvements, and they are showing it broken down into two phases. They're showing a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. They're proposing to do the phase, the turn lane in Phase 2. Reason being, for Phase 1, they want to do the building itself, but not the outdoor fields. Phase 2, at a later date, would be the outdoor fields. There was also some discussion on the, during the meeting, I should say, regarding coordination of events with the Buddhist temple right next door. There was nothing specific in the pattern book that was revised, and that revised pattern book, again, is with your iPads on the SharePoint. But I'll let the applicant discuss that in a little more detail. He is present. Water, as far as the facility itself and fire protection was also discussed, they have submitted some information to CUD. CUD has not been able to make any kind of official determination as far as what needs to be done with the building in a fire protection standpoint. Now, that's obviously something that would have to be done, should this be approved and get to a site plan stage. So that is something that we're still waiting on. I also wanted to point out that the, one of the residents in the area submitted a letter, which is on your SharePoint. If you look on there, it's called the Old Nashville Highway. It's got the application 21007 on there, and you'll see that's a letter from one of the neighbors out there with some of the concerns that they wanted to bring, but they wouldn't say they wouldn't be able to bring it here to tonight's meeting, so I wanted to point that out to you. So like I said, at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present, I know can go into a little more detail about this, but I'll be happy to go into any more detail as far as the actual application from the last meeting if anybody would like me to.
Any questions for staff at this time? Applicant present, and if y'all, would you please come forward? Is that better? Soft-spoken as it is. I'm here representing Jorge Lopez, who is the man who would like to purchase the property and is currently the leader of the soccer club. And also with me is Ben Livingston, who is a representative from the real estate side for Mr. Lopez. So if you have any specific questions, Mr. Livingston has a history with this client as well as with the overall operation. He's had many years of history over at the Oakland's facility, Oakland High School facility. As far as where we stand, I just want to go ahead and talk about the site, but I can go through the whole presentation. We've heard it a few times, so I appreciate your patience for this process. The biggest change is we did commit to adding the turn lane. It's a right turn lane in. Mr. Lopez did verify that the majority of the people who come into the property are coming in from the Murfreesboro side, and that catalyzed a revision on some of the alignment in the main driveway. So, and it may show on your pattern books, and actually, that one's a little bit older. I'm not sure. I guess that's the old PowerPoint. The actual driveway has been moved over, justified more towards the center of the property, and that's good because it takes it away from Mr. Lopez's property, which is the property to the east, and also kind of centers it from the adjacent property to the west. So with that in mind, in order to accommodate the turn lane, that's what we had to do. So the second issue that came up was the fire protection was one of the issues, and we have spoken, we had an engineer who does fire systems speak with us today, because the primary concern was whether there's enough volume, as far as water's concerned, for fire protection, and we have more than enough volume of water. The issue is that the pressure, right now, is about 20 PSI, and so if Mr. Lopez goes forward with the project, he'll have to have some sort of a pressure enhancer, some sort of a booster or something along those lines, primarily because of the height of the building, that water has to be pumped up to the ceiling and then distributed. But overall, water availability is around 1,200 gallons per minute, and the fire protection requirement's around 700 gallons per minute, so we feel confident it can cover the concerns of a fire. As far as the temple's concerned, we did speak to a representative from the temple. That was kind of an interesting experience. Their primary activities during the daytime, which I thought was kind of interesting, they didn't do a lot during the evenings, and even on the weekends, it's more during the daytime. I did find out that there are monks that live on the property, so I spoke to a representative of the temple, and they referred me to the monks, and I had a chance to leave a message for a monk, which is kind of interesting. I didn't get called back, which is kind of discouraging, but the fact is, is that I was pleasantly surprised that most of their activities are operating during the daytime. And as Mr. Livingston mentioned last, the last hearing, that there's a real good chance that the way Mr. Lopez's business runs, if there is a significant event at the temple, they can change their operation. They're not such a business where they can't be flexible. But the temple, I think the temple has several festivities during the year that are large, and so they can coordinate during that time to say, hey, during that time, our facility's going to open later, or something along those lines. But it's not nearly as busy of a facility as I was thinking on the weekends. So that was kind of nice to get some clarification on that. Overall, I feel like we've been responsive to the concerns. I guess the last concern was lighting. We would like to keep the lights on the third, the last field if possible. Because of the nature of the temple being used primarily during the daytime, we didn't feel like that was going to be a conflict if in the evenings the lights were used. And as Mr. Livingston mentioned last time, these are not the high-grade professional lights that you'd see at one of our high schools. They're much more of a low-grade light that are lower, I mean, again, same light requirements as far as off-site lighting, we can't have that. But they're not the powerful lights you'd see associated with, you know, more of a contemporary ball field up today. So those were the primary issues that were addressed. We, I think, by making the adjustments on the access point, it does take it further away from the adjacent property line, so I was excited about that. It came as a result of having to do the turn lane. So with that in mind, I'm open to any questions you may have. I think those are the four primary concerns that came out. I appreciate getting to talk to some of the Commissioners regarding that turn lane and traffic, and we feel like we've done our best to address the issues that have been presented to us. So I'm available for any questions. I'll also be available after the public hearing if more questions remain. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for REZ21-007, Hudson Steel Engineering for George Lopez, from CN and CG to a PUD for soccer facility. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Would give your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. And I, we've, as Clyde mentioned, have done this several times. I just have to stand up here and just say my concerns, the turn lane, the traffic, the lighting, all of those things. None of those things are going to change. I know that they are doing their best to accommodate what they can foresee, which, you know, this will be a new experience for everyone. I'm not trying to be a difficult neighbor. I just have concerns about that traffic on that road and the lighting and the noise. That's it. Just putting it in writing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for staff, if I may. I believe I must not have been here at the last meeting when this was before us, and apparently there was a big discussion on the traffic and the turn lane. And Mr. Roundtree just told us that the bulk of the traffic will be coming from Murfreesboro, so there will be a right turn lane into the property, coming in from the south, if my understanding is correct. But it seems like to me, if they're having practices and games, they're going to be in the evenings after work when perhaps a lot of traffic, in my mind, a lot of traffic would be coming from Smyrna back to Murfreesboro, and of course, it is always much more difficult to make a left turn across traffic than it is to make a right turn. Is my thinking on this incorrect, or is this, was this discussion, have we already been down this road and decided that it is better to have the turn lane coming from the south?
Well, I think the discussion that was had last month, and I mean, obviously, Mike correct me if I'm wrong, there wasn't really any, that detail wasn't really ever brought out. They just, the most of the discussion was, should there be turn lanes here? Now, I guess I was kind of under the impression, looking at, talking about turn lanes, that this would be a right and left, not just a right lane only. I don't know if they actually did any kind of a traffic study to figure this out. We have not received anything, as staff, that I can recall. But I'd like to see kind of whether they're getting the information as far as their assumptions, quite frankly. But I think the discussion really, it wasn't specific to one turn laner either, it was just turn lanes. So, I mean, Mike, is that kind of how you remember the conversation? Yeah.
But you might note that they've moved their main entrance. We asked them to line the main entrance up with a road across the street so people could see clearly coming and going, but they moved it away from that cross street, I guess to add the turn lane in, but I don't know if that's enough separation from Reynolds to their driveway. It doesn't appear to be. And the turn lane would have to be designed to Astro standards to, you know, for departures and tapers and all that, so it doesn't appear like it's a lot of room in there.
Mr. Chairman.
David.
I have a question for Mike. Last time we discussed this highway not being a state route, I thought it was a state road.
Old Nashville Highway is not. New Nashville Broad Street is a state route.
So the permission for the turn lane comes from where?
Through us, Old County. Yes, sir. Mike.
Thank you, Chairman Phillips. Again, I was absent from the last meeting where this was discussed, so I can't talk about the traffic. But one thing that concerns me, and Mr. Roundtree admitted that he did try and reach out to the temple and was guided to the monks and left a message, but has not spoke to Because this is a temple and a religious facility, and they have been established for some time in the county, I don't feel comfortable in voting for or against until that communication has taken place and we hear that the monks are thumbs up or thumbs down, or if they have an issue. I think we owe it to them to get a answer, if they're okay with the activity and the noise that will take place at multiple soccer fields going on at one time on the weekends and evening practice. So depending on what other questions come up, I'm either going to make a motion to defer, or I'm going to vote no.
And we defer again.
This has been deferred once. You're allowed to defer up to 60 days, so it can be deferred one more time, because at next meeting, there'll have to be a decision, recommendation made, one way or the other. Okay? But before any motion was made, I don't think you were actually making a motion yet, but I think we should have some other discussion, too, regarding the lighting. That was a concern that was brought up. Noise is something, I mean, that we can, we do have regulations on as far as the performance standards in our zoning, as we do for lighting, but those are issues that have also been addressed. The, I understand what Mr. Roundtree was talking about as far as the water. I just want to make sure that he's aware that that, what he was talking about while he was up here was not any kind of an official determination that was made by CUD at this point. So, again, now, that's not necessarily, I mean, that's something they're going to have to work out one way or the other. If they were to get this approved and then come to find out that they didn't have what they needed as far as fire protection, they would either have to, A, make the improvements to the water system to provide that level of fire protection to the facility, or they just wouldn't be allowed to build it. The zoning would still be in place, but somebody else would have to purchase it at that point. Since it's a planned development, they wouldn't be able to change the use, but if somebody wanted to come in and maybe had the ability to, you know, if it was a matter of financing, and they had the ability to make those water system improvements, then that could be done based on the planned development. But these are just some issues. Rather than have to defer it just on one item, I just assume we get all the issues out there to make sure that these are all covered, which frankly, I thought was what we were trying to do at the last meeting, but I wish there's still a few loose ends out here, so just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
Commissioner Aberwater made a good point. I'd like to also determine whether we need a right and a left-hand turn. When we say turn lanes, I think two, but they'd be up to y'all to make that decision, so you can't make that decision tonight, I don't think.
Chairman, I was at the last meeting, or where this was discussed, and the property owner said the traffic would be coming from both directions, is what I remember.
Mr. Chair, I just see too many hurdles that have not been jumped yet as far as the turning lanes, the lighting, the water supply, any other issues. I'm going, perhaps the noise, if there's a way to regulate that. I think those are our big issues. I don't see that those have been addressed. Contact with the next-door neighbors at the temple should be one of those requirements. Try to coordinate activities so that you're not all over each other at the same time. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to deny this application.
Also. Deny? I have a motion and a second to deny. Item REZ21-007, Hudson Engineering for George Lopez, and this is for the soccer facility. Other discussion?
Okay, we talked, meant to go about deferring. What does the motion to deny, can they come back when? Can they work it out?
Right now, the motion, if this were, now, I know we have a motion and a second, if this is to be approved, right now, all it is is a recommendation. Okay? If they wanted to kind of step back and kind of redo everything, they could come back next month if they wanted to. They could, and now, quite frankly, they probably want to try to work through some of this before trying to do that, but there's not a certain time that they have to wait in order for it to come back, since it's just a recommendation.
If it's denied?
Correct. It's just, at this point, it's just a recommendation. It's not a full denial through the Board of Commissioners. This is just a recommending body, so that's why.
No questions? Call for the vote. Once again, we have a motion and a second to deny REZ21-007. All who are in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Motion to deny carries. Item 6A3, REZ21-009, Michael Lamping for Elmington Residential. Location is 2762 Las Cassas Pike. Commission district is four. County commissioner is Robert P. Size of the site is approximately 46 acres. Tax map is 68. Existing zoning is RM for Residential Medium Density. Proposed zoning is for PUD. Planned unit development for residential subdivision. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As stated, this property is located along Las Cassas Pike, about 46 acres. The applicant is proposing, now, in your staff report, it'll say 120 single-family detached units on the subject property. When I wrote the staff report, they were still awaiting word from CUD about the total number of lots that could be handled based on the amount of sales that were submitted for review. That did come back, and that analysis actually took it down to 116 as opposed to 120. In the pattern book, also, you will find information, and again, this wasn't available when I had written the comments originally, so let me just scroll down to the page I'm looking for here. So the page I'll be on in the PDF, it's PDF page 6 of 13, which is actually, if you look in the lower right-hand corner, the actual PDF document's page 4. Basically, it's the concept plan, what Mike has up right there is what he's looking at. So this is on your iPads if you wanted to follow along. Again, the site acreage is 46 acres. We're looking at 116 units for proposed density, about 2 and 1/2 dwelling units per acre. Minimum lot area in the RM is 15,000 square feet. What they are proposing is 6,600 square feet minimum lot size, and they are looking at a minimum lot width of 55. They are showing setbacks, 35-foot front, 20 on the rear, and 7 and 1/2 on the sides. There are two different products that you can see on here. You'll see there's two different colors on this concept plan. You'll see the yellowish, if you will, is a regular front-loaded product, whereas there's 10 lots, actually, it's more 12, excuse me, lots in that area that you see are what are going to be called alley-loaded. So that alley between those lots is actually going to be a private road. The lots themselves will front either the community park area, or they'll front along Las Cassas Pike, but they're accessed, they won't have driveway access onto either, that will be through that little alleyway right there. The rest of the roads, though, are proposed to be public roads. Parking and access, basically, the parking, most of these are going to be, like I said, the single-family. They're going to have the 35-foot front setbacks, so they are going to accommodate multiple cars in the driveway. The rear alley-loaded product, a little shorter as far as the driveways go, however, again, they are backing out onto a private alley as opposed to a public road. Mike's kind of showing you some of the schematics there in the pattern book right there. One of the big, a couple of the big issues we had on this really dealt with traffic and drainage. I'll let Mike handle the drainage and probably even a little bit more on the traffic. But what you're seeing as far as traffic goes, you're seeing that they are proposing turn lanes, left turn lanes into both entrance points that they have. Both entrance points line up to either Emory Road, and the other one lines up to Bryan Court, and they are proposing left turn lane entrances into both of those particular entrances. So that was a concern that we had, was just the number of units, knowing the traffic out in that area. As far as landscaping, residential PUDs, as you know, are not generally required to show any kind of required landscaping, but they are required to have a required amount of open space, minimum 10%, with half of that being usable. You can see on the plan, they are showing the community park in that area, which I know Mike will talk a little bit more about as far as that being kind of in a low area, but also a amenity area near the Stormwater Pond. A lot of that area to the south in green, that's actually the step area that you're looking at in that area. There is a letter on your SharePoint also that I did want to point out to you, similar to the letter that was considered at the last application. We did receive a letter with concerns for this particular application that it's on there for your reference. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. With that, I will turn this over to Mike to discuss some of the drainage and any other traffic issues you might want to discuss.
Okay. Thank you, Douglas. As you can see, there's a large depression on the northern part of the property. I will turn on contour layers to kind of let you see where it's going. This is aerial imagery from early 2020, and we do have aerial imagery of the May 2010 flood, and you can kind of see how it handled during that. Same, same thing, a little bit larger extent. So this bowl fills up, holds water. There is a lot of good soil on
There is a lot of good soil on this property. Anybody that's driven by, you've seen the nice crops that they produce out of here. But this bowl fills up and kind of goes to the east to another set of sinkholes in this area. So, in itself, not a, not a bad thing, but once it gets to this sinkhole, the ground starts going back up. So, goes back up to this ridge farther to the east. So, that's one of the things that we talked to the design team about, said we really need to study this really well. This is a volume-sensitive area with this depression holding water, and then if it builds up, spills over, goes to this group of sinkholes in the area here. So, that's, you know, fair warning that that's something we're going to really closely look at. And traffic, I thought they did a good job on the traffic study. They evaluated, let me turn off some of these contours, and they evaluated all the way down to the Dejarnet intersection and the traffic signal, and then all the way up to the Compton and Last Cassis intersection, the traffic signal. So, the Dejarnet's about half a mile away from this property, and then the Compton is about a mile up the road from the other end. So, and they evaluated several road crossings, and the traffic study essentially said that they're going to put in a left turn lane for Emery, left turn lane for Bryant going north, and then also a left turn lane for the new road coming in across from Bryant Court, and a new left turn coming in from, across from Emery. So, they'll, they will have, and I'll show you on the plan. You can see that the road improvements here. The traffic study, interesting to note, said that the traffic signals right now, well, right now, they're at a B and a C. With the growth, projected growth, they're still going to be at a C, and with this additional traffic, they would still be at a C. So, the, the traffic signals function right now, where the real issues are the turning movements on the new roads coming in and the Emery and Bryant Court. So, that, that's the reason you could see that they, traffic, I mean, the turn lanes will be needed, so, and that's what they've done. So, all in all, drainage is going to be something that we look at closely. Traffic, I think they've looked at it pretty well. This is a new city development right here, a little bit farther to the south and across the street. I think the roads are already in, but I don't know of any improvements that they're proposing. I wouldn't be surprised if they are required to do a turn lane in this road, in this section as well.
Mike, is that depression right there, does it, does it have a slow sink in the bottom of it where it finally?
I would assume it has something, or it's the good soils, and I hope I didn't lock it up. Bear with me, this computer, it, I'm remoting into my computer back at my office, and for some reason, if I ask too much of it, it locks up, and then I have to reconnect. Yep, it's done it, so let me, let me reboot real quick. But they have very good soil. They've got Cumberland, Lowman, Harpeth soil, so that's part of, that, that water soaks into that, that good soil and takes it away. I talked to one of the design team members this, before the meeting, and he said they had a geologist look at it, a geotech, excuse me, that look at it, and he didn't think it wasn't a actual sinkhole, but if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck, I always think it's a duck, but I'm not a geotechnical engineer.
You've got a line of sinks over on the next piece of property, and sometimes they line up.
They do. If you look far enough out, you can see sinkholes pretty much form a line, and you'll see a branch come off in one direction, another branch come off in another direction. But this thing will cooperate. They have some really, really nice soil in here that I think helps with the water soaking in, but I don't know if there's an open throat or not. So, if this is approved and construction plans are generated, we would definitely require a geotechnical engineer to be on-site when this area is excavated and material replaced back in to make sure it's, it's compacted per their standards.
Mike, if I'm reading this right and looking at the picture of the drawing of the houses, we're putting houses right in the middle of that depression?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Where we're putting the water that's going, that's been being in that depression.
Well, that's, that's something that we'll need to see in the construction plans, because right now, they're, they're showing it as a community park, and you, you know, the limits of the depression go far exceed that, that park. So, any, any work that's done to that depression would need to be under the direct supervision of a geotechnical engineer. So, it's done in other places, and if it's done under their direction, it's done properly, there's not an issue. You, you know, direct the water away from it, you don't have that continual feeding breaking away of the limestone bedrock, and it's typically not an issue, but that, that water's being held right there, right now. It's, it's providing storage. So, where is that, that volume going is, is a good question.
All right, I have another question slash comment. In the houses that have the back alley access, where's Grandma going to park when she comes for Christmas?
That is a good question. Well, looking at, I mean, they would have to park in that alley or in the driveway spaces. I mean, these are going to have garages, but that would, that would be their option. They would, they would have to.
So, basically, so basically, we're drawing a plan, but if anybody has a visitor, we might not have a place to park them.
At least for those lots in the private, the other lots, there aren't the rear-loaded ones, they have more driveway space, so that's probably not as big of an issue, but your point's very well taken. And looking at the overall grand scheme of things, this is Northside Estates here. Part of their approval process was to have an emergency access route to the south, so fire trucks could get to them. Right now, they only have this one road in. The developer of this subdivision has purchased this parcel, this parcel, this parcel. So, they will be progressing to the south, and we've asked them to look at at least extending one stub street to the east to allow interconnectivity of, of the subdivisions, because property right behind them is going to develop as well. So, it's better to have interconnectivity so that traffic can disperse instead of dumping everybody out onto the main arterials.
Mike, you just mentioned the development to, down by Saddle Drive, that was?
That was Side Estates, yes.
And they had similar issues with water and big ponds, and they put together a plan, and undoubtedly, that plan is working fairly well. The water's being retained. Is this similar to that?
Yes, sir.
And they have, looking at a similar alternative to that depression?
Yes, sir. They have several ponds. They have a large one up front, and they have two, two more back here, a large one here and a large one in this area. So, they're all interconnected, and they flow to the northwest towards Last Cassis But we actually had a, a call, doesn't show it in this photograph, but had one of the residents down here was, I don't know about concerned, but he said that there's never any water in here, and I was like, well, just wait after a big rain, you'll see plenty of water, but he, he thought it would have more water in it, that this image shows a lot of water in it.
It fills up all the time.
It does all the time, yes, sir.
But it goes away?
It goes away, yes, sir. All in all, it's, you know, good soil, will help for the infiltration in there, but just where this water goes, we'll need to study that very carefully and work with the design team on that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mike.
Go ahead.
So, the stormwater is positioned on?
On this side?
Yeah, I'm looking at, I think, page four. So, it's positioned in their plan to be on the far right-hand side, and the community park is where the current depression is. Why would you not plan for your stormwater to be where it already naturally wants to go?
That, that would be an answer for the design team.
And then the other question, this may be for you or for Doug. You've got the community park right there, and if you're going to put that next to the homes that have that alley access, why would you not designate parking? Because folks are going to need to park if they're going to drive to the community park anyway, that'd be the perfect place to have additional parking for guests, but I didn't see it on the book, on the plan.
Yeah, and that's a, and again, that's a good point. They are not showing any additional parking areas for visitors beyond what is being provided for each individual unit. Again, it's not so much the, it's not so much the yellow lots as opposed to the greenish-yellow lots, because those are all front-loaded. The greenish-yellow ones are the ones that have the back alley, so, I mean, there's a couple of ways you could handle that. You could, like you were stating, Ms. Allen, you could have a designated parking area for visitors. They might look at also maybe those lots, you know, 11 through 16 and then 70 to 22, look at those, possibly changing the front setbacks a little bit to give the back driveways a little more oar room. I mean, I think they're trying to maximize their yard, is what they're trying to do, but there are ways to handle that, and that would be one of them.
And then I'm assuming that the mailboxes are going to be somewhere around the community area, the pool or clubhouse?
Right. That is correct.
Any other questions for staff at this time? The applicant present, please come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Jack Parker with Catalyst Design Group. I'm representing Elmington Residential for this development at 2762 Last Cassis Pike. So, I think staff has done a really good job of explaining the bulk of, of the community, but just, just to reiterate, the intent is to, to have a walkable community with access points across from existing streets, Bryant Court, Emery Road, with amenities for, for the residents. As far as the community park, we certainly could take a look at, at providing parking there, but the, the goal for the community would be for it to be more of a walkable space where, where residents are walking to and from, with potential parking spaces up at the, at the clubhouse where the, where the pool amenity would be, and that's, that's the intent for the, the location of the mail kiosk as well. It could be split up. USPS will allow more than one drop-off location, just with, with a minimum of 16. So, we could, we could split that up and put one over near the community park and one over at the, the amenity center. That'll all be worked out in the detailed design, but the, there has been a, a good amount of, of detailed investigation into, into both the traffic and the drainage issues, I think. I think Mike has, has stated well the, the extent of the traffic. With regard to the drainage, there has been a couple of, of different analyses that, that were conducted by a geotechnical engineering firm. One was infiltration testing, and as, as expected, there, there are some substantial infiltration rates. Test, test pits were done both in, in that low area that, that we've discussed at length and at the, kind of at the eastern boundary line where the spill-over point is for, for drainage on this property. Those locations show, show multiple results with, with very high infiltration rates, which you would expect with this type of soil. So, the, the intent for, for drainage for the system would be to, to provide infiltration and stormwater detention in the, in the, the basic area where, that we have shown on the concept plan. Now, detailed design will, will bear out whether that is sufficient size or not, and if there's additional area needed, then, then perhaps a portion of that community park space has to become detention infiltration area as well. In addition, the, the geotechnical engineer, and I'm having to read this because I'm not familiar with this, this test myself, they did an electrical resistivity tomography analysis. Now, basically, what that, that means is, is they, through electrical current, they, they determined, I guess, the, the amount of resistance that the, the bedrock underneath has to any type of penetration. And what they found is that they couldn't, they couldn't determine that there was a designated throat for, for a sinkhole. Not to say that, that that area couldn't have some characteristics of a sinkhole. Nobody will know that until they, till you open it up and start working, but the, the basic results of that analysis were that they, they couldn't conclude that there was definitely a sinkhole there. It looked like there was pretty solid bedrock throughout. So, it, it would lead us to believe that the, the high infiltration rates in, in several of those test pits in that area are what allow that to drain dry over time versus it having a sinkhole throat. So, we, we will work with staff and comply with all of the, the stormwater regs as this goes into, to detailed design, but the intent is to utilize the, the exceptional soils that are there to infiltrate and recharge the groundwater table as much as we can and, and detain what we can't before it, it sheet, sheet overflows into the property to the east, which is what a, a portion of that property already does today. So, I'm, I'm happy to, to answer any questions that, that commissioners may have, and, and their representatives from Elmington here as well that can answer any development-related questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Leave that picture up there, Mike, if you could. That one you just had up there.
Yes, sir.
Put it back down where we can see. What do you expect these houses to sell for? You have just a general idea?
Oh, go ahead.
Right now, there are no new construction homes available on Last Cassis Pike, so we're comping to product that's in the surrounding area. So, we're building three- to five-bedroom homes about between 1,600 to 2,200 square feet, and we're estimating they'll sell in the mid-400s.
Mike, that picture back?
Of the farmland?
Yeah, the farmland, right there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, a $400,000 house. Would you build your $400,000? Would you build your $400,000 house in the middle of that spot? At this spot, right there?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking you that.
Sure. So, yes, depending on who the engineer was and how it was constructed.
You're braver than I am, I'm just telling you.
Well, and in reality, the center of that low point, which is where you would expect any type of sinkhole feature to be located, is right smack dab in the middle of that community park. So we're really trying to mitigate any potential issues by creating a pretty large community green space in the most vulnerable portion of that low area. So I would feel confident with the oversight of a geotechnical engineer out there each day while they're paving, they're proof-rolling, that with the proper positive drainage and the proper installation of those features, that there wouldn't be an issue.
I'm not necessarily looking at a sinkhole, I'm just thinking about water that has been standing there, and that's where it goes to.
Sure.
And I just know, all the years that I've lived, where I've lived here in this county, I've had to drive cows and things out of places like that, and that's where they end up and whatever, but I'm just saying, that right there, I just look at the history of it, and, I don't know, it's just very questionable.
On.
Thank you. So why would you not swap where you've got the stormwater position and the community park? Why would you not let water be where water wants to be if you're having to have a large stormwater detention area anyway? I'm just curious about the logic of the positioning.
Sure. Well, a couple of reasons. One, it's eventually going to go to the east, there's no way for us to send it anywhere else. So positioning it at the backside of the property, that's where it's ultimately going to discharge offsite anyway. Also, it's, as far as aesthetics, a community park looks a lot better right there than a hole in the ground that's going to sit there dry six months out of the year.
Okay, so I guess when you say "community park," a lot of times that's just an open green space anyway, but you're thinking about something more built out in terms of a community park?
Well, it could be any number of things. It will be an open space that is planned for the residents. So, not sure about, when we talk about park, that could mean a lot of different things, but there will be thought and effort put into creating that as a space that people will want to gather and people will want to take their kids.
So it looks like the community park is positioned where the depression is, the trail leads to the stormwater, which is kind of how it naturally flows anyway. Is that kind of the plan?
Mm-hmm.
So, talk to us a little bit about the, I know you said you want this to be primarily a pedestrian-friendly community, and so you've not really thought a lot about the parking. We like our cars in the south, and we like to use our cars even for short distances, and also to plan for visitors. I would like to hear you talk a little bit more about your parking plan. I really like living in tree neighborhoods, I wish we saw more of that, so I find that piece appealing to me. I think it can be super attractive for any community, but you have to plan for visitors, you have to plan for people who are coming, and also the people who live the furthest away from the pool, they're not going to go, they're not always going to want to walk it, so they're going to find a place, a way to park. So I'd just rather go ahead and be planning for that in advance. Talk to me a little bit about your parking strategy.
Sure. So for those rear-loaded lots, it'd be especially, it'd be really easy, especially for the ones that front the community space, to flip-flop the setbacks where you could create a 35-plus-foot setback on the rear, where you could have a true driveway, just like the other lots will have, where you can park three, four cars in the driveway in addition to your, all of these will have garages, so it will provide space for visitors to come and park on lot, and that's really the intent. That way, you don't have vehicles parked on the street, so that's kind of part of the intention of having a 35-foot setback on all of these front-loaded lots is to be able to get sufficient vehicle parking on each individual person's property. So for the amenity, the pool amenity, totally agree, there will be parking up there, because there's going to be a clubhouse there as well, so you may have small community events there, or they may have space for people to rent out a room for birthday parties, whatever it is. So you're going to want, there will be a bank of parking up there, especially if that's where the mail kiosk is going to be, so you can zip in, get your mail, and head to the house.
And the last thing is, so how wide are the roads? And are you doing sidewalks on both sides? It looks like I'm seeing sidewalks on both sides. And how wide are the roads?
The roads are county standard local roads, so they'll be 24-foot wide, two-lane traffic, curb and gutter, just like any other county standard. And yes, there will be sidewalks both sides with the planting strip, so it, we want it to feel like a walkable community and not just a, you know, a very dense urban feel, so.
Questions of the applicant?
If you would, lots 11 through 22, I believe it is, look different. Private drive, they just look different than the other ones. Can you explain yourself, why that? Why are you putting something different in there than the rest of the community?
Sure. It's just like anything else. People like to have variety, so there's just, there's something to be said for a different style of home, for folks to be able to, really, those, especially the ones that front the community space, those could be sold at a premium because of the view and the privacy of the rear access. So it's mainly a preference as far as just laying out a community that has different, has a little bit different product for different types of end-users.
This commission, over the last 10, 15 years, has approved a whole number of PUDs, and some of the things that we've learned are outdoor living spaces that we've heard just countless complaints about through the years, but some of our biggest concerns are parking and street parking and what that looks like as time goes by, not a year from now, maybe not even five years from now, but 10 years from now, 15 years from now, what those houses would look like compared to the rest of the community. It's a concern for this commission, and it's a real concern for this commissioner. So I've got a concern about that, I've got a concern about the private drive and how that may end up being a conflict with the HLA and the rest of the residents versus those residents and what they may look like as time goes by. I've got a little bit of a concern about that, and I'm not saying I can't get over that, but I do have a concern about it.
Mr. Chairman, another question. How does, we've got several lots here, 12 through 15, that are going to front basically Las Casas Pike. Water's going to fall on those lots. How's it going to get to the stormwater retention?
Well, for the actual structures themselves...
Is it going to go underground, or is it going to go, is it going to run across everybody else's yard and across the driveways and everything else to get back to the back?
For those in particular, there will likely be an underground collection system, particularly for the alley-loaded. Now, for the green space that fronts along Las Casas Highway, that will likely be collected in a swell of some sort along Las Casas and then directed underground and back towards the overall facility.
Just looking at the architectural character page that they have, it looks like the top two images are your front-loaded houses, and these are the alley-loaded ones on the bottom here.
I would add, I think he's correct, absolutely correct. I would say those ones on the bottom are closer than what you would see...
That's right.
Should this be, I mean, that's for just, you know, display purposes more than anything. They are calling for the minimum 15 feet between the structures, even on the ones that are rear-loaded, so they're not going to be that close on the bottom, the way you're seeing that.
But is the water going underground?
Built in other communities, in the package we included renderings of the, in the package we included renderings of the homes that we've drafted for the subdivision. But those are more similar to what we'll be building. They're definitely larger footprints, as you can see, the maple and the hickory are north of 2,200 square feet. The homes that you're looking at, they're fully developed, those were probably around 1,400, so we're building much larger open floor plans.
You mentioned other communities, where's your last?
So we've built in West Nashville, we're under construction in Kane Ridge and Antioch.
Other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you, stay close.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more, I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
Mr. Parker, I have a question. In the pattern book, usually they will specify the minimum square footage, the number of bedrooms, the number of garages, that kind of thing. I'm not, I've looked through your book a couple of times, I'm not seeing that level of specific detail provided.
Okay. I believe we have called for a minimum square footage of 1,700 square feet.
Am I overlooking it in your book? I was just looking for what page it's on.
I thought we had it in the book, but if it's not...
If you would, talk into the mic.
Sure.
I just know that when we approve a pattern book for a PUD, this is what you're obligated to, and so I just want to make sure that all the details have been provided, so if I was overlooking it, I just want to know where it's at.
I thought we included it on the concept plan with the site data table. If it's not in there, that's where it will be.
Thank you. Doug, this is a request for rezoning.
Yes, sir.
Before anything is built, we'll have to approve all of the building plans and all of the drainage plans and all of those things, so we're actually talking about a rezoning of this property, and is it proper for a PUD to go in that?
That's correct.
So a lot of the questions that we've been asking should be addressed when any type of a site plan is put together.
And I will add, I mean, in general, yes, that is correct. Now, I will say that some of the items that were brought up as far as the location of some of those lots in that lower area and everything, now, some of those things can have an impact on their design, so it'd be better to flesh some of those things out on the front end as opposed to going through the process, assuming it's approved, and then they find out they have to make changes and then have to bring it back for consideration. So generally speaking, yes, a lot of the nitty-gritty drainage calculations and things, and Mike would agree that, yeah, that is worked out typically during the plating process and construction plans, but if there are features in here that you really do want to see shifted around or moved, this is the time to do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. On.
That being said, Doug, I commend them for their traffic study and for the parking for the larger lots, but the parking for the alley is not sufficient. I think, Mr. you said before that 70% of people don't use their garages for their cars, and there are two parking places for those alley entry, and no one, and two cars, if they have any children, they're going to have more than two cars, and that allows no visitors. So there's got to be more parking with those alley entry, and I understand the need for a variety. Those that don't want a yard or do not want to maintain, that is, I commend them for the variety, but the parking is just not sufficient for those particular homes.
And again, this is the time to start fleshing these things out, so if, after the, of course, we have to have the public hearing, but after the public hearing and then further questions, if you think there are changes that need to be made, this would be the time to start addressing those.
Thank you, Doug, for that clarification. Any other questions? This time I'll declare a public hearing open for REZ 21-009, Michael Lamping for Elmington Residential. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come forward.
Been around the home building business my whole life, my father was a building inspector. I was an appraiser for years for the property association's office, and I lived directly across the street from this property, directly across the street, 2761. I know Bill Pitts, that owns the property personally, and every family up and down the road, and I, we saw the plans, it's just crazy. I used to appraise properties up in Laverne when they were building, you know, houses just like this, just every square inch, you know, and this is, kind of looks like what they're planning to do here, and it's just, it just doesn't make any sense. They talked about the traffic study, well, me and my wife do our own traffic study every single night. We sit on the front porch of our house, we live on the corner of Emory Road and Las Casas Pike, and we do our own traffic study every night, every night, every night, every night, every night, there's a collision, seven days a week, give or take a day or two. We see it every single night, you know, and so that's our traffic study. I don't know what they've done, but anyway. So it's not about them building houses across the street from us, it's about them building way too many houses. They just built a new subdivision down the street, there's 400, 500, 600, 700 dollar houses, whatever, you know, they got nice bigger lots and a whole nine yards, you know, they could do that, they're, might not be a bad thing, you know, but not 122 houses. It's just, it's just way stupid, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, and you talk about the parking and the, oh, if your grandma comes and blah, 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 parking for this and parking for that, well, none of that has anything to do with anything. It's all the people coming out on 296, out of that subdivision at Emory Road and Brian Court, and, oh, we're going, we'll put in a turn lane, we'll put in this, put in that, whoop-de-doo, you know, if there's not a red light, there should have been a red light in Emory Lane for years, and there isn't, and people have died, but, you know, apparently that doesn't matter, but, you know, it's just way too many houses, and the parts that they're talking about back here in the back, Bill Pitts owns the property, I've known him for the past 10 years now, and it's eventually going to be a sinkhole. I don't care what anybody says, it will eventually be a sinkhole. They've done their studies or whatever, it's going to be a sinkhole. It's held water for years, and he said every year it just gets lower and lower and lower, so we'll put a park on top of it for 122 houses and eventually look caving in on a bunch of kids. But anyway, way too many houses, maybe 30, 40, 400, 500 dollar houses across the street might be okay, but not 122 houses. 96 won't allow it, Emory Road won't allow it, the traffic is so bad out there already that it's just, it's just, it's just way too, way too much, way, way, way too much. And then, so, no matter what they do, if they do anything with a sinkhole, it's going to be a sinkhole, I guess it's going to go off to the neighbors over here and off to the neighbors over here, so, I don't know. That's just my personal opinion, it's way too much, and, you know, I live there, so, you know, I see it, we see it on a daily basis, so.
Thank you.
Doug, while these folks are coming up to speak, would you kind of address that property's already owned for residential... that property is already zoned for residential development?
Yes, sir.
And without a PUD, how many houses could possibly be to go in that area?
Most of the conventionally zoned, what I would say is RM, we're looking at somewhere between one and one and a half units per acre is what we're looking at. If you took the acreage of this, about forty-six acres, and you said one point five units per acre, just on the high end, you'd be looking at somewhere around seventy to seventy-five lots. Roughly speaking.
Okay. Hi, I'm Cynthia Jones. I'm a retired teacher from Rutherford City Schools. Proud to tell you that was a wonderful career, and I'm privileged to be here speaking for you. I live on Bryan Court. And Bryan Court is below the level of Lake Las Cassas. Now, that's what we call it, because if you look at the map, that big brown area is about one-fifth of forty-six acres. Do your math. That's about nine acres. That thing floods all the time. And I'm not saying just a little, and I'm not saying a lot. I'm saying a lot of water. The water stays there for days and days. How do we know that? Geese come, mallow come. It's there. That's why it's brown, because nothing grows there, because the water stays there. Now, we live across the street and Bryan Court. If you look up to our left, that's a hill, and water comes down there to Bryan Court. When it rains a lot, Lake Las Cassas fills up. And I am at 1572 Bryan Court. I get a wet stream down between me and my neighbor, which then takes an interesting left turn. I have a garden there near the left turn, which is nice because it gets watered by nature. However, we're low. We're low. Where is that water going to go? There are no sinkholes, I understand, nearby for that to drain into. And the one that is valuable is up a hill. Again, this is not making any sense. It truly isn't. I don't want Elmington's water. Guys, I don't want your water. I don't want to be flooded. I found out Huddleston Steel will do an elevation study for my area at five hundred dollars. And then Trey Hilton tells me it's six hundred dollars for flood insurance. I don't need to do that. You guys need to, before you build, get an engineered drainage whoop-de-doo plan in place. And I'm very serious. I will not be flooded out by you guys because you're not doing the job you need to do. Use one or two studies. Honest to God, seriously, folks. Now, my second concern is traffic. This morning, because I'm a retired teacher, I stood out on the corner of Bryan Court and Ninety-six. Traffic started about 7:05, bumper to bumper, two miles an hour, you know, until about 8:45. Now, let me tell you, there are nine subdivisions that feed mainly into Ninety-six. And they are North Side Estates, Saddle Drive, Brandywood, Spring Hills, Farmington, Silverstone, a big division off Barlow Lane called Old Orchard Road, Greystone, and Huntington. They all have main dumping area onto our little two-lane highway. Okay? Now, what do we have right down from us? The great big Laurel Stone Retirement Complex. What the hell? We can't handle it. That gentleman was right. There are accidents there all the time. The two-lane road has steep sides to it. How are you going to put two turn lanes there? I don't understand the logic of it. When we have this many cars on the street, it is dangerous, it is crowded. How are people going to get to MTSU, Oakland High School, Oakland Middle School, John Pittard, Providence? They all go down Ninety-six, guys? It really doesn't make any sense at all. So, and I'm sorry to be so passionate, but I am. I have lived in that area and love it. And I know our area is low, but you have to be very careful building that many houses. And you're not sure where it's a sinkhole, you're not, that sinkhole is, is, is huge. And it stays, and it stays. I'm going to start taking pictures. I don't know if it'll be in time. And somebody said to me, why haven't you taken pictures? Why would I take pictures of Lake Las Cassas? I, I, I wouldn't. But I can show you, it is a lake, and we all call it Lake Las Cassas. We really do. And that's a lovely either. So for two reasons, serious, serious concerns about drainage, which don't sound like they've been addressed very clearly, and ongoing traffic congestion, which is, again, very serious and deadly. I would urge you to look into this project a whole lot more carefully. Thank you.
My name's Lawrence LaRonde. I've lived at 1582 Bryan Court for twelve years. When I first moved in there, I was always concerned because there wasn't water. I don't worry about that anymore. The last five years, my backyard, which literally is one area away from Emery, my backyard looks out at Emery, floods. And I don't mean just floods. I mean it fills up. My trash cans float. I tried to mow in camp for several days. This weekend, after just Saturday's rain, I went to mow my next door neighbor. And my craftsman tractor would even go through the grass.
Can't get through it.
So we're getting water from someplace. Now, I will tell you that the last five years, the only thing that I've noticed different as far as the water issue is we built a bunch of houses across the street.
Yep.
Which we were assured there would be no drainage issues with them, but there is. And I have pictures of ten years ago, and I have pictures current. So it's there. So something's going on somewhere in that water table. The second thing I would like to address is I am also a teacher. I'm still currently teaching. I leave at 5:30 every morning, and I drive to Manchester. And I can assure you, getting out at 5:30 in the morning sometimes is a very stressful thing. Cars come up over that hill, past Silverstone, at seventy and eighty miles an hour. And I don't exaggerate.
I wish you did, and you know, too.
You either go out in front of them, and then they slam the lights on you, they do all that, or you wait and hope you get a break. And it's every morning.
Every morning.
Not only that, but I can tell you, since I've lived there, the amount of sheriff's cars that go out toward Auburn Town has just gone crazy. Night after night after night, and we're talking all hours of the night.
Yes.
That's something to do with traffic. So, and the other two issues I have, I'm concerned about the fire situation. Are we going to be able to get protected, all those houses? Or are we going to end up with a problem with the fire and the emergencies?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If there's no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Chairman, question?
Mike.
Michael, on the traffic study, you said that with future projections, they were still a C, I think, right?
On the traffic of the signals? Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So what does that really mean?
That's the time that somebody has to wait to make a turn movement. There's levels of service. So you're supposed to leave the, the intersection or traffic signal as good a condition as you found it. So you can't make it any worse. If there was some additional demands on this, we would have to work with our traffic engineer to either extend a turn lane, work on the signal timing of the intersection or whatnot. But right now, they're saying that this level of development will not make the traffic signal any worse than it is.
Traffic signal or the?
The signals at Ninety-six and DeJarnet, Ninety-six and Compton.
Okay. But you still obviously propose a danger of you've got to get out to Las Cassas, like these people have talked about.
Yes, sir. And that's the, why they're putting in the turn lanes.
Okay, all right. But does the grade, like it used to be when I was in grade school, A is great, a B is okay, a C is fair, and D is failing?
E is still, is still operational. Once you get into the E and F levels, you really have to do some work on the, on the traffic signal.
Is there a long-range plan, or what, what is the prognosis for any widening of Las Cassas in that whole business area?
I think it's planned for a five lane?
Yeah, the, our long-range transportation plan does show this as a five lane at some point in the future. Now, this is a state road, so it's going to have to be a state project. Now, I'm not aware of any imminent improvement that's coming to Las Cassas Pike. That's not, certainly not in discussions we've had with the state on that.
Public hearings closed. Sorry. Could you just make a comment that there's a lot of us that are members of this planning commission that have lived in Rutherford County our entire lives, be for seventy-three years. And what's happening at every meeting when we have a development, we're hearing the exact same comments from residents that are affected by that development. What we're being told, and we believe it to be factual, is that our county will have a little over four hundred thousand residents in the immediate future, and a little bit somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand residents in the next twenty to twenty-five, maybe thirty years, twenty, twenty-five years. So traffic is not going to get any better. Not. So to say that can't build because of issues that relate to traffic is probably not factual. What we need to address is how are we going to make road improvements? And then how are we going to afford to pay for those road improvements? So these are all issues that this commission will be addressing within the next six to eight months as we look at updating our comprehensive plan. And that'll be one of the issues that we'll be talking about. But traffic is an issue that is brought to our attention almost every single time we have one of these developments that come before us. So we're, we're hearing it over and over and over again. And let me say, I could get from MTSU to the interstate in a matter of ten minutes at 6:00 AM in the morning twenty years ago. But now it takes you twenty-five, thirty-five, forty minutes to get from one side of town to the next almost at any particular time of the day. So traffic is an issue, and it's going to continue to be an issue. Whether we have an answer for it or not is, is kind of up in the air. But once again, this commission will be taking a look at our comprehensive plan, our long-term comprehensive plan, and traffic will be one of those topics that we will try our best to address. But it's an expensive, expensive, expensive proposition. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mike and for Doug. Because of the depression in that area and the standing water being so well documented, I don't pretend to be an engineer who would know the best place for the stormwater to be held. Would it be appropriate for us to ask for a hydrologist's report regarding those soils and where the best placement would be for the stormwater?
Not at all.
I, I agree with Mike, yeah.
We made that clear on the initial meetings we had with this. A volume-sensitive area, that is paramount versus the typical rate of runoff. Typically, you look at the rate of runoff, the water leaving a site. But if it's, if it's held in this area and contained in this area and goes to another area that's volume-sensitive, we have to look at the volume of the water that's generated. So it's, it's a different comparison than just the standard rate of runoff.
You would find value in seeing that report?
I'm sorry?
You would personally find value in seeing that report if you're analyzing the site?
Yes.
I also feel like the pattern book is somewhat incomplete and that there's information that would normally otherwise be there that's missing. We don't have the minimum square footage, number of bedrooms, garage. I didn't see a landscaping plan. It just feels overall generally vague. So I would personally, I'm happy to hear from the other commissioners, and we'll make a motion if needed. But I'm happy to hear from them. But I would be completely comfortable in deferring this for, to allow them to revise the pattern book with greater specifics and then also to obtain the hydrologist's report.
Right. Got a motion?
Only if there's no other comments. I'm moved, yes.
We have a motion to defer and a second. We're still open for comments.
Mike, I'm concerned with the neighbors across Las Pa, excuse me, Las Cassas Pike talking about the yard is now, stays muddier than it did in years past. Is there an explanation for anything that would cause that other than the fact that this year we've had more rain than?
What says later than?
The, the, the people that live across Las Cassas Pike there along Bryan Court, and speaking of possibility of a rising groundwater table and the fact that there's, they used to not have the kind of water on their property that they have now. Is there, is there any, is rising groundwater a possibility? Or is it, can there be any explanation other than the fact we've had more rain this year than in years past?
I think we've had two or three years of heavy rains as part of it. I don't know if it's the, you know, something changing in the soil so it doesn't soak in or the groundwater table rising. I think it's more just the heavy rain that we've had and experienced the last couple of years.
Mr. Chairman?
That is.
Mike, would that just be necessarily a depression? It's just depression that's going to hold?
On the subject property or across the street?
What you see right there.
That, that is a depression.
That is a depression, and I, I mean, it's just where the water's going to go. You can look at, you look at your elevations all the way around it, and that's the low spot right there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the hole that it goes to. I mean, it's been a while since I've studied all this, but I have a degree in plant and soil science, and I've just looked at too many fields and measured too many plots. That is the low spot, and if you had to declare, back in the days when we were declaring wetlands, that's a wetland, and you can't grow anything there. And that's basically a depression, and that's why I asked the gentleman, would you build there? I would build there, but the only reason I would build there is it's going to have to be elevated before I'd ever build there. And then I'd still worry about it. But now, I'm just telling you, I mean, when you look at that, and just like the lady said there, I believe she's exactly right in the total acreage that is in that, in that water. I mean, I've driven down that road, and I've seen that, that amount of water that's in there. And the only reason I notice it is those beautiful Canadian geese. And I want to get out and make a photograph, but, but I just see that depression there. And if this had not been a motion to defer, if we were voting to approve, I would have had to vote no, Mr. Chairman.
We have specific design requirements for draining to sinkholes, draining to volume-sensitive areas, and I've pulled them up on the screen so you can kind of see. There's a lot of work that's going to be... There's a lot of work that's going to be involved, geologic investigations, houses built up over spill-over points. You've got to assume that the sinkhole, the ground's not going to take any water, so we've got to discount that. But it's very detailed what we need.
I have a quick question for Mike. On our regulations, on the backloaded street or alley, whatever you want to designate it, what is our standard width requirement for those roadway widths?
It needs to be safely two vehicles to pass or you make it a one-way street. It needs to be at least two 11-foot lanes, I think, to safely pass vehicles.
That's basically the same as a regular roadway?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say that and caution about this because I think we alluded to allowing parking on that earlier in the discussion. In the large development I live in, we have a fair amount of backloaded streets like that, and in our HOA, it specifically says you cannot park in the rear-loaded roadway that has to be left open. And I don't know, you know, it's, we don't ever get to see a draft of HOA rules on developments like this. Maybe we should, but I guess we would want to insist, this body may want to insist that be part of an HOA regulation. But, you know, you've got emergency vehicle needs, certainly trash vehicles have to go down that street, but if you have one or two people parking, you can't squeeze a trash truck in there without tearing down some mailboxes, let alone trying to get a fire truck down there if somebody's parking. And, you know, not only that, it's a nuisance, maybe even a legal nuisance, I'm not sure, that may be Nick's territory, but parking is an issue as Chairman Phillips had insinuated. It's one thing we look at on these PUDs and it's a struggle. So, I just want to let you know that in my HOA with the exact same type of layouts, they do not allow parking, air-loaded parking on those roads.
Commissioner, I think my concern with what you're saying is required in the HOA documents, what's to prevent a board of directors on an HOA from just changing the rules five years from now and prohibiting the parking? I think your point is well-taken here in that there's not any easy access to the fronts of these homes for ambulances or fire trucks and the alley is, I believe it said, 22 feet wide. So, yeah, there's no way really to get any movement back in there.
Banda?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for Mike and for Doug. This question's really for the benefit of the neighbors. Lots of folks don't, they're not able to make the distinction between how this body would look at a PUD versus a traditional zoning. Part of the reason that we're having the level of scrutiny and detail that we are tonight is because they're asking for a PUD and that allows us some ability to exercise a closer examination. In the event they would want to come back with a different development that was not tied to a pattern book, what's the same level of scrutiny and examination that would be given to that water area versus how we're looking at it tonight?
Same, no difference.
But we would still recommend for the hydrologist's report?
Most likely, yes.
Thank you.
I was trying to get to alley-loaded product at Stratford Hall to kind of give you a comparison. There's some off Caseon Lane too, well, the newer section of Caseon Lane, some of the area they developed back in there, there's some alley-loaded product there too. In and of itself, it's not a, I mean, I like the concept, but I do understand the concerns about the not as much parking because as you can see from these pictures, it's just the driveways aren't as long. Now, Stratford Hall's a little bit different in character than some of the others, but at the same time, the issue is still there as you can see from these pictures that Mike's showing.
Mr. Chairman, on my motion to defer, I would also like to mention in the pattern book, one of the items that was missing was the plan for guest parking. Let's make sure that's included in that.
Are reading that right, addressing the private road versus?
Really just guest parking in general. We need a guest parking plan.
That's part of your motion to defer. Part of your second, Charlotte?
Second.
Okay, part of your second. Okay. Other questions or other comments? Do you have a kind of a clear direction as to what the deferral would need to address?
Yes, sir. Very good. I've been taking notes.
Any other questions or comments?
One comment. Elmington is a big-time developer both in commercial and multifamily residential. I mean, they know what they're doing. I'm sure they'll come back and produce something that we would be happy with. Catalyst also is a solid civil engineering firm. I think this may be their first or second visit to us as a committee, but I have full faith they could come back and make us feel good.
What would it take to get a light at Emery Road?
Oh, warrant analysis and they, I think they did that as well. Yeah, and they didn't say it was wanted. I would like a traffic light there, but, you know, that's me.
I thought these things?
Well, it would have to get approved at the local level first and then we would forward it on to the state for their approval.
Other comments, other questions? Once again, we have a motion to defer, item REZ 21-009 for Elmington Residential. All for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion to defer carries. Thank you. Item 684, REZ 21-012, Davis Lamb for NVR. Location is 4871 Lebanon Pike. Commission district is 14. The county commissioner is Virgil Gammon. Size of the site is approximately 57 acres. Tax map is 47. Existing zoning is RM for a residential medium density. The proposed zoning is for a PUD for a residential subdivision.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property should look familiar to the planning commissioners. We've had a couple of public hearings on this particular property earlier this year. As you recall, they were originally proposing to construct 180 townhome units on this property. Staff and the planning commission did have several concerns with that plan, which included the density ingress and egress to the property and resident visitor parking like we were just discussing. After much discussion, the planning commission did ultimately recommend denial of that original zoning request back in April of this year, and it did not go forward to the board of commissioners, so the application and that plan in and of itself just kind of went away from there. The applicant has reevaluated their proposal. Now, they're planning, excuse me, to construct 137 single-family detached units on the subject property. So, that's less units than what their original proposal, and it's a different product. These are detached opposed to the townhome units they were originally proposing. The property could accommodate a maximum of 165 single-family units under the current RM zoning. Of course, as we've discussed, that's more of a gross density, a more realistic density looking at around one to one and a half units per acre is probably around 110. So, their proposed density as they're showing is about 2.4 units an acre. There's a chart on your iPads in your staff comments that kind of gives you just an overview of the two different types that they are looking at. There's 52 in what they call Type 1, 85 in Type 2. Type 1s are a little smaller, Type 1s have a little bit more square footage to them, but you can see as far as the lot width, the maximum gross floor area per unit, and the bedrooms and parking and garages, you can see, are pretty much the same. All units would be constructed with vinyl, hardywood, or stone water table materials. You can see the architectural renderings, floor plans, and other information in your pattern book, which is also on your iPad. Consistent with our regulations, they did have a neighborhood meeting on this. It wasn't highly attended, but there was a property owner who owned some property across the street. Lebanon Pike did come and just kind of see what the plans were. This development will continue to access Lebanon Pike. All streets would be public rights-of-way. There is a proposed stub street to the west into adjacent Murphy'sboro City Development, which we had talked about before. They're also proposing, as you can see, Mike's got the development plan before you, there's two stubs to the north. Now, we've been in conversations with both of these properties. These are actually separate pieces of property where these two stubouts to the north are. Mike is showing it right now. We've actually been in conversation with both of these owners, the development teams, so to speak. Right now, we don't have anything that's been officially submitted. However, we are urging some coordination amongst the development of all three of these tracks with the interconnectivity, also looking at the traffic in this area, especially at Central Valley Road and Lebanon Pike. Actually, the same traffic engineer that did the study for this particular property we're looking at today, looks like is also going to be doing the studies for those two properties. Again, nothing imminent at this point for development, but just to let you know that we have been in conversations with both of those properties, tracks to the north on that. One of the biggest concerns that we had during the public hearings earlier this year was involving the traffic triangle, excuse me, the vision triangle located along Lebanon Pike. I'm going to let Mike speak a little bit more to that. We've had some conversations with the applicant team for this particular development as early as late last week regarding this, or I guess it was kind of early mid last week regarding the site triangle. Mike has this, Mike, do you just want to go ahead and since you got that up?
Yes, sir. They have modified the site vision triangle and they did make the decision point behind the stop bar. So, when you pull up to this intersection, as you're leaving this development, pulling out on to Lebanon Pike, you'll be able to see 515 feet to the north and then also 625 feet to the south. So, there will be a lot of grade work that'll have to happen on their side of the property as they are adding a northbound left turn lane and a southbound right turn lane on Lebanon Pike. And then you can also see that they've got a dedicated left and right coming out. So, that's given me a little more comfort, letting them know that this little bend in the road is still going to cause some issues. It's still going to be a little tight, so there might be some retaining walls that they'll need in this area to get that to work. That, part of what we're, and to remind you, there's a little bend in the road as you're coming south on 231, there's a little cemetery, it's called the Black Family Cemetery. It's an old, old cemetery from the early 1800s. And so, that was our, if you remember me discussing this, this was the rock and the hard place because you've got the river on one side and this bend in the cemetery on the other side. So, they have done a lot of work. They've done some grading work on this front, showing this that they will be able to see to the north and to the south. So, if someone's coming out to leave this development, they'll be able to have adequate distance to see, and if someone's coming to, you know, going south or north, they'll have adequate time to see someone pulling out. So, and then just to also emphasize what Doug said, the development will have two connection points, one in this area and one in this other area that will, I think there's a plan for a road to go all the way to North Central Pike and then out to, I'm sorry, Central Valley Road. And we've asked these developers to look at the warrant analysis for traffic signal. I think it's needed now, but that's something that they're going to evaluate and see how their developments will all interplay. And we've asked them to look to the other development teams and kind of team up and see what we can do together because that would be an excellent way to allow somebody, instead of making a left turn, even though it meets our requirements, if you've got the ability to come to the north and come out to a traffic signal to make a turn, I think that's going to provide a lot more safety and security for the motorists in this area.
Regarding the parking in these lots as well, you can see from the pattern book that they are showing driveway space for four cars and then two in the driveway. So, they have not provided any additional visitor parking since, again, these are not going to be the attached units anymore, they're going to be detached. And Mike is kind of showing what they're, and you can see kind of how they're laying out their buildings where they've got increased rear yards, not just, they're not necessarily increasing their rear setback on the lots, but they are limiting the size of the buildings to provide a little bit more use for backyard. So, you can see, Mike, if you could zoom out to show the master plan again, thanks. You can see what they did, you remember the original plan was just kind of a straight shot to the back. Of course, they had the roundabout. You can see that they've kind of made a circular area in the back. They have, we did have some concerns about that one cul-de-sac that are kind of at the very western end of the property, about sight distance because that's on the inside of the curve. I believe they have made some changes to that.
There's appear that they've flattened it out.
Yeah, they flattened that out, so.
We want more of a T-intersection there instead of the inside of a curve, so it looks like they've done that.
So, and I will say the development team's been pretty, they've been pretty involved in the discussions that we've had with them and have made a lot of the changes that we've asked them to make. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Members of the development team are present if you have any questions of them as well.
They have added a traffic circle that will help slow the traffic down as well.
Yeah, well, there's one, the other one.
But they also provided connectivity to other properties.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. So, did you say on that interior cul-de-sac that it looks like it's labeled Road 2, did they line that up with the road that's labeled Future Road Connection? It's more of an intersection?
That, yeah, we'll have to look at that. They're supposed to be at separation between intersections. I believe it's 150 feet, so that might be a little tight right there. An earlier plan, this is the connection to the city development to the west. We asked them to reevaluate that and make sure that was lined up. Earlier iterations had this stub road a little bit farther south, but just looking at the plans, I believe it is farther up here to the north, and you can kind of see they've already drawn in the center line of these roads and that's where that connection would take place. So, that's something we'll have to fine-tune with the construction plans. Think what they're doing is taking advantage of this hill. There's kind of a hill right here, and the roads would go around it and then have cul-de-sac going to the top here.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, what I'm hearing you say is that there would be another way in and out, correct?
Yes, yes. We would have two ways to the north, one way to the west. The city development has encountered wetlands in this area, so I don't know if and when that's going to happen, but we've provided a connection to if it does, if they can mitigate that and continue with their development. So, and the developments to the north, they are all aligning their roads to be able to get out to Central Valley, and like I said, we're most likely going to see another traffic signal here. With those developments, we've asked them to go down to Cherry Lane to evaluate those, that intersection, and then also up to Jefferson Pike. Because right now, we've got the Walter Hill Elementary School, but if you recall, we've-- the Walter Hill Elementary School, but if you recall, we've also purchased some land for a middle school and a high school up here. So we're gonna see a lot more traffic heading north in the morning to take your kids to those schools, uh, so we gotta be able to get those, those folks safely up there and then back, or on the way to work.
Other questions for staff at this time? The applicant available here, would you please come forward?
I'm Stephen Power with NVR, Ryan Holmes, and, um, happy to address any, any questions anyone has. I would like to say that, um, we do feel like we've listened, um, to, um, to the commission and made some changes in response to, um, the last time we were here, and so, um, anyway, I'm, I'm available to answer any questions that any of you guys have.
Questions of the applicant at this time? Questions?
Thank you.
This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 21-012 Davis Lam. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this resounding request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Misses.
Doug, do you, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Doug, do you, uh, see any hindrance with the stubout roads not coming to fruition in the pretty near future, so by the time this one gets finished, the other one will be working and, and we will have more than one way in and out of this subdivision?
Yeah, it's hard to say from a, a timing standpoint, but the conversations we've had with those property owners to the north, I think it's really just a matter of time before we see a development plan. Now, again, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's ever gonna happen, um, but from my standpoint, I like what they've done with this development, the changes they've made, and those properties to the north will develop at some point, and when they do, those stubs will be waiting there for them, so.
They've also planned to do this in phases, so you have the ability to say, okay, we'll give you phase one, but we'll see how the rest of it goes with the other circumstances.
That is.
But, but they've designed that entrance as a standalone. If they needed it to be the only in and out, it's there.
Well, my concern is if there is something that blocks that single drive back through there, that rifle shot back through, if you have a, an accident or something, fire, oh, I jumped, but if you have something up there on house number, uh, 5 or 10 or something like that, you've got a lot of people that can't get out to Leavenin Road.
Yes, sir. Many, many of the longtime residents remember the South Ridge tornado. Yes.
That is.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is about the third time that this has been brought forward, but what I wanted to say, it's, I think it's good to see the changes that have been made. Um, I know from the first time that we saw this, to the second time that we've seen this, to what we've seen it now, uh, this started as townhouses, if I remember correctly, but, and now we're down to this point here. Um, I mean, we went from absolutely no, I think, at the beginning, to the point of, of the point of dealing with the, uh, the turn lanes or the entrances or getting that site plan, I think that's been totally moved, and we've seen that has happened. We now have buildings on both sides of the street, rather than just on one side of the street, than went all the way through, and, and we've seen a little bit of creative work within it. I guess is what I've gotta say here. Uh, I think what I'm seeing, and I think there's gonna be more that's gonna have to be done, and I think we'll see that as far as the final site plan comes back to us and what we're gonna do there. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make the motion to approve with staff comments, and we'll go on from there.
We have a motion and a second to approve REZ 21-012 Davis Lam for NVR. Other questions before we vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Commissioner Whitworth, if we build schools out there, they'll come.
Just one comment, uh, since probably, probably this, uh, nobody left out in the audience, but that piece of property out on, uh, Las Casas Highway, I'm really familiar with it. My mother-in-law and father-in-law lived off of Saddle Drive and kinda backed up to that area, and, uh, I've seen, uh, seagulls, uh, out in that field, seagulls, on a number of occasions, more than one, so, uh, the motion to defer, in my mind, was proper to take a real serious look at that piece of property to see if, um, uh, see what's there and what can be done to develop it. Doug, you have anything?
No, sir, I do not. Our next meeting is scheduled for 9:00 AM. Uh, they'll be here in this room, uh, on August the 23rd, Monday, 9:00 AM. Anybody have anything? Once again, thank you for your attendance and your participation. We are adjourned.